I've missed a good week this week at Crossfield.
Hey, I've worked out the last two days. Today was awful.
Hey, Tim?
Yes.
Tim, I realize I did this late and I can't vote, so when you do the budget, you just get pass it up.
Okay.
We're ready.
I'm fully ready. Meeting of the Land of Sky Board of Education will come over. And we release the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna do the resolution.
You go read it.
Honorable board members and our distinguished guests tonight. Every month, we honor a group of employees in our school system. And for January, tonight, we're going to be honoring our nutrition staff. And we have a resolution that I want to read. It says, "Anderson County Board of Education, a board resolution honoring the school nutrition staff members. Whereas the nutrition staff members are an essential part of the efforts to meet the needs of the whole child in our schools. And whereas school nutrition staff are often the first ones at the school to start the day off right with good, healthy meals for the students and staff members. In some cases, the hot meals they prepare are the only ones that the students get daily. And whereas the Board of Education and the Director of Schools in Anderson County recognize and appreciate the importance of the work of the school nutrition staff members. And whereas school nutrition staff members work hard to promote a healthy eating lifestyle for our students and staff every day. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education acknowledges and expresses its appreciation to each school nutrition staff member in our school district. And be it further resolved that January 13th is hereby established as School Nutrition Appreciation Day in Anderson County schools. Be it further resolved, a copy of this resolution be sped upon the minutes of Anderson County Board of Education. It will be wholeheartedly and unanimously selected by the elected School Board of Anderson County Tennessee meeting in regular session this 13th day of January 2022." And next month, we will have every school, as you know, will present us with a nutrition person that we will honor and above and beyond. So I will say this, they do a great job. They've had to have a lot of changes in their, with the supply chain issues. Every week, they order thousands of different things for our schools, and half of it comes in, or stuff that comes in is not what they order. And they've done a great job of kind of changing on the fly to make sure our students are fed every day. Ms. Burrow does an excellent job with her staff, and we want to congratulate them tonight.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the resolution honoring the school nutrition staff members.
Motion second, we approve the resolution honoring the school nutrition program staff. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Recognition of guest. There being none persons to be heard. There being none approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moving second approval of the agenda, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second approval of consent agenda, discussion. None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Executive approval. None for the past month. Comments from the chair. The TSBA retreat scheduled for...
Valentine's weekend.
Yep. It was scheduled for...
The 28th.
25th or something. Anyway, it has been rescheduled because of conflict at the Museum of Appalachia up till 18th and 19th. Any conflicts or problems?
I'm gonna check, but I don't think so. I may have to be in Indianapolis.
Start at three, you say?
Yeah, yeah, we'll start at three that day. Try to start at three that day and go from three and have supper at six, and then try to be out by eight, and then come the next morning and finish up. Ms. Williams been helping, and Jim Gresham, the same guy that did it last year, facilitated. I've talked to him a couple of times, and we're gonna work on kind of shoring up the agenda. If you have anything special you want to bring up, just get with Ms. Crawford, and she'll put it on the agenda for us.
Is he the same one that facilitated?
Yep.
Okay, last time.
Yeah, and I'm waiting to, probably getting a little ahead of myself. The governor's gonna do his State of the State till January the 31st, I think. So I really, I've started, me and Julie's kind of just looking at budget, but there's really nothing we can do till we see what he's doing with that. So we hope to have a lot more things on that. I'll go over more in my report, Dr. Burrow.
Well, Emma Carroll from TSBA has sent a board evaluation via email to each board member, apparently today. We need to complete it by February the 1st. Pam, do we need to send it to you or to her?
It's a product, so you'll do it online. It goes direct to you.
Do it online?
Yep.
Okay. So what was the evaluation form that we had here?
That was one, that was just a draft of the, of my evaluation. And what we're asking, if there's anything you want to add to that evaluation or take away from it, and then we will give you the updated one with data in it at the February board meeting that you can complete. And then we'll go over it, y'all will go over it at the board retreat.
Okay. So we'll have the information at the retreat?
Yes, yes.
The other thing is the Legislative Legal Institute Day on the Hill, I guess, is it, is this the same as the Day on the Hill or?
Yeah, they've actually, they've actually put it together a little better and give you a little more information this year.
I think everybody's got a copy of it. And it's Monday, February the 14th, Valentine's Day, and Tuesday the 15th. And it's at the Doubletree this year. So we need to let Pam know who's going and so forth. But it does look like a better agenda with the Speaker of the House and Senate. I'm not sure they want me there.
They may not want any of us there.
Afraid I get in trouble. That's all I've got. Anything else we need to plan or bring up?
No.
Comments from student board?
It's been great to be back at Anderson County High School these past couple of weeks. For academics, our fall teen ready testing, Anderson County High School was higher than the state average in four of the six different subjects that were tested. Our juniors are also still continuing to prepare for their in-school ACT that will be later this semester. For sports, our basketball teams and our wrestling team have all been going hard in their seasons. The basketball teams, the ladies, actually lost a contested game the other night against Seymour, but our guys went in and had a 72 to 41, I believe, victory over Seymour. And they will travel tomorrow to Clinton for a very exciting game. And our wrestling team will be going to Halls this Saturday to have booze. And then Anderson County High School will be starting our basketball homecoming week next week, and our student government will be putting on Spirit Week that week with different days, such as Anything But a Backpack Day, where you'll bring your school supplies in anything but a backpack. And we'll also have that Friday, Neon Day, for our student government pep rally, which will be blackout themed. Our Student Government Association is also holding a winter formal that will be next Saturday, January 22nd, where the guests will be able to walk the red carpet. That is all I have for you tonight. We are all very excited to be back at ACHS and to see what this semester holds. Thank you, and hook 'em.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday. I know I enjoyed my time off. And I also wanted to take a second to thank you for the sweet card and gift. I really appreciated it. I have lots of good news to share with you today. So first of all, I would like to start off by bragging on the gear up leaders, including Mrs. Merriman and Ms. Watson, for their wonderful work in getting all of the Clinton High School's seniors, class of 22, ready for college. Over 65% of our seniors have completed everything they need to in order to receive financial aid, so it's only a matter of time before the scholarships start rolling in. In fact, UT Knoxville sent out early admission letters in December and honors program placements. Shane Miller, Abby Bible, Addie Shelton, and myself were accepted into the Chancellor's Honors Program, to which they only accept 300 freshmen. That means Clinton High School occupies 1% of the spots, and that's a really big deal. Additionally, Ava Hall was selected for one out of the 100 spots in the Honors Leadership Program. Rocky Top offered quite a few more of our seniors' early admission based on their outstanding essays and remarkable achievements. And many of these students have already, or many of the students accepted have received scholarships worth up to $60,000. Some more recent Clinton High School success stories include the fact that we now have 13 members of the 30-plus club, we had more credits earned last semester than in the past 10 years, and we have had the highest rate of the students participating in dual enrollment classes than ever. In fact, all of the juniors and seniors on the baseball team are taking a dual enrollment class right now, and thereby taking their academics to the next level. I also want to take a minute and give some personal shout-outs to some of our amazing dragons. Sarah Burton is now the Lady Dragons' basketball all-time leading scorer with an amazing 1,681 points. David Holigan and Ian Circe made the All East Senior Clinic this past week, along with Sarah Bounde, who was awarded first chair on flute and will be participating in All State. And finally, 15 of our CHS HOSA members placed in the top five, scored in the top five of their respective competitions in our region, and will be advancing to compete at the state level in February. Overall, Clinton High School continues to have mind-blowing accomplishments left and right, and we are so proud of this amazing start to 2022. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you all. Sully, tell your granddad I didn't say anything bad about his uncle.
Hey, Dr. Burrow, before they, before they leave, tomorrow night, Anderson County and Clinton play in a basketball game, and I want to make an observation. In my lifetime, there have been two basketball teams in our county that have had a chance to win a state championship, a legitimate chance to win one. One was, Cleet Nichols had a team in the early 70s that got upset, had a chance of doing it at Clinton High School, and then Tony Cross had one with the Lake City Girls team, when Shelley and that big Morton girl there. This Clinton High School Boys Basketball Team has a legitimate shot to win a state championship, not just make the playoffs. Anybody that's watching this, you need to go watch these guys play. They are fantastic. And it is rare to get a team that has a chance to not only go, but to win and compete. So I would encourage everybody to go out there. But I also want to throw a shout-out to my Lady Mavs, who have come a huge way.
Yes.
They've won like three games in the last five years combined, and we are, we are winning ballgames. And I talked to Teresa, I've got a lot of volleyball players play on the basketball team now, and I talked to Teresa, we are gonna make a friendly wager that I think the Lady Mavericks are going to upset the Lady Dragons. And if we do, Teresa's gonna come...
Not gonna happen.
Teresa, Teresa is gonna come wearing a Clinton shirt, or an AC shirt, to the next game, and if Clinton upsets the Lady Mavericks, I'm gonna come wearing a Clinton shirt to the next board meeting for the ladies' game. I'm kind of writing the boys' game off right now, no offense to DW, but Coach Lockard was very kind and played his young players against us after a 30-point first quarter opening last time. So Sully, you get those girls ready so that Teresa has to wear some blue next month. Have you told them what size you were, Sully? I believe in these girls. They're playing hard. They are. We are small but mighty.
I think Sally...
I'll put batter in orange instead of blue.
I think Sally has got a scholarship. Is that right, Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Pretty good.
Sally's a good ballplayer and a good young man.
I gather.
Tell us where it is.
I've gotten one from Maryville College, and I'll be going to interview, I think, February 5th for the McGill Scholarship, which could cover a majority of my division.
Good school.
Yes, Dr. Burrow, just, I'll try to be as brief as I can. We, we were asked from our county commissioners, and as you know, we'll be talking about it at our board, at our board retreat, about Claxton Elementary School. We had a survey that went out today to all the people in Claxton that have students there, and it's on their social media for them to fill out that, what they would like to see in a new school at Claxton, what programs, what, everything about it. So we're gonna do that, and hopefully, and I will bring that data back to you all at the board meeting, the board retreat. I've asked, also asked...
Excuse me, Dr. Matt?
Yes.
Does that go out to just the school people, or is that going out to the community?
It goes out to school people, but it's on their, it's obviously on their social media site, so people can go and get it too. Yeah. Because we didn't have emails or anything to send it out to all of those. Yep.
Good job.
The other thing is, I've talked with Chris, I don't know his last name, at Cumberland Securities, and he's gonna put together two or three plans that show, okay, here's some funding plans that we could do at Claxton Elementary School, because that needs to be in our five-year plan. The other thing that we're working on right now is a focus group, putting some focus groups together with our new teachers, our seasoned teachers, and our custodians, and cafeteria workers and all that, to try to get to gauge them on what we can do in Anderson County to make, to make it a better place to work. Are there things that we can do that are in our power, other than just money that says, okay, here's the reason I want to work for Anderson County Schools? So we're gonna put that together. We will have that ready for you at the board retreat, which I think is gonna really, because we know there's some things we need to look at with classified salaries. So that, that will be some, some things with that. Also, at that board retreat, we will have the updated five-year plan, strategic plan for y'all to look at. So all of those things are in the works with our budget and things like that. Our EST projects, they have been at a lot of the schools. They will, they are gonna start on that just as soon as, they've already ordered materials and things like that, so we hope to get it going. NBI, we met with them right before Christmas with Norris. They should be in the next week, ready to do some pre-bids on Norris Middle School. So we, we hope to get that going. We've kind of given them a timeline that we'd like to be in that building by the start of school the following year. We had a town hall meeting up there and answered every question. It was some, some great comments, some great conversation, but all the comments were really positive about what we're trying to do to alleviate some of the traffic and things like that. The softball building that you all approved at Anderson County High School, they were setting poles yesterday, so that's gonna be a great addition to where we can, it, it takes the softball out of the gym, so it allows wrestling now to have their own dedicated space. We do have, waiting on, if weather holds off, they're supposed to start the lights at Clinton High School softball field this year, this week, this year, this week, but due to the mud, I think they're gonna have to wait just a little while, so we're hoping on that. But they've already bringing in the dirt for the infield and things like that. So all of that stuff is, is ongoing. I have started my meetings with my principals. I do a mid-year review with all my principals. We have about 20 questions that we ask them about the school, about staff, about, about everything, and they fill it out, and then we come in and I meet with them and the directors and go over it. And this year, we've added a step to it. Mr. Deal is actually, after they meet with me, he meets with them and with their SRO and people from the sheriff's office, EMTs, and they're reworking our school emergency plans. They're going over them to make sure there's not any places out there that safety can fall through the cracks. So I want to thank him. He's put a lot of work on that, really and truly. When we went to the TSBA convention back in November, there was really good people there that we talked to, and he went to some, some conferences there that kind of said, hey, here's the, here's the way we need to go. So all of those things involved in that, yes, we have COVID in our schools, but we're, our nurses are doing a great job of making sure that people are safe. I think we did probably 200 tests one day this week, but we still have those tests and are doing them. So Catherine and her group are really working hard. Our plan is every day, we know that the best place for our students is in school, so that's where we're at. Take any questions.
Tim, how are we on the, I know we talked about the pour up at AC and the gym being ready to go once basketball season completed.
Yep.
Are we still on schedule to do that?
Once you all vote...
Appropriations?
Appropriations tonight, we have it, what we're doing is getting the specs on what they want, and then we're gonna, then we'll have it bid. We hope to have it bid in the next two weeks. Yep. All I have.
Committee reports budget committee.
Teresa has a question too. Yes, Teresa.
Sorry, so by saying that about the school, does that mean there are no plans of closing school?
Not right now, there's not. And, and the reason being is our state, really and truly, we have to have a waiver to close the school, and they won't let us close a whole school district. They would only let us close one school. And we may get to that point next week, but all the information I've read from the, from the CDC and health people and everything, supposedly, this thing is going to, it's going, they say it really peaked on January the 6th, but there's probably six to eight million people that are in, that have it, that they think the numbers will peak on the 19th, and then that will start going down. But hospitalization won't peak for two weeks after that. So hopefully, we're gonna see that really drop down. Our principals and, and our staff have really just, Kelly Myers was in a classroom today, and, and so everybody's pitching in to make sure classes are covered. Tomorrow will probably be a rough day, but I've already sent some things out with the principals and got some people saying, hey, if we need you, if we need people, holler at us.
How many staff have we got out?
We got, right now, there's 32, it may be 36. We got 36 staff members that have COVID, and we had 134 students as of today.
How about substitutes or able to...
That's down from Monday, because we were told there was 73 staff members.
Well, now, now that's people, that's people that were, that's people that were out. We had a, we had a total of 120 staff that were out today for one reason or the other, but 62 of those didn't require a sub. So, so we had about 22 classes that were not covered today, that they had to move assistants and, and those, because we have so many permanent subs in the building, they can move those down. Tomorrow, I think we'll be about 128, and, and that's about, that's a little over about 10%, it's about 12%. So really and truly, when you think about, we still got 89% of our class, of our, of our team that are still here, so that's really good.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there a magic number, Tim?
No, last time, we had a couple of schools, we had Clinton High School, that we had to close for a couple of days. We had, Anderson County had to close for a couple of days. Sometimes it's easier to close those big schools, and we can take the people that are in there and assistance and move them to the small schools. So we've got a plan to do that if it gets to that. The state only did one waiver, I think, last week, and it was Collierville High School. They were at 25% of their staff was out, and they had to close Central Office for a day or something and send everybody over there before the, they would actually even give them a waiver. So hopefully, next week's a four-day week, so. And the good thing about it is, since they dropped the quarantine from 10 days to five days, our staff is not out as much. And because a lot of them were going home with close contacts or going home and they didn't have any symptoms, and they weren't that extra five days. And so even with that, that's one of the things that I hope you all support tonight, is going back and reinstating that COVID pay for up to five days.
Do we need to vote on that?
It's, yeah, it's in, yeah, it's in an action item. Yep.
The budget committee met Monday night, had a few things to send to the full board. Appropriation 1A is $300,000 to appropriate funds for substitute teachers, since we are going through them.
Yes.
So that's what that is. 1B is the appropriation, $750,000 for funds for architectural services, renovations to nursing clinics throughout the district, gym improvements at both Anderson County and Clinton High School, as well as the work at Norris Middle. Appropriation 1C is funds for student services, travel and supplies, $2,100. Appropriation 1D is to appropriate funds for food supplies for Head Start, $770.40. And we also had an addendum, which is a new grant money that comes part of the ESAR program, the tutoring grant, and that is $168,000. So appropriations 1A through 1D, as well as the addendum, were all approved by the committee, and so I would make the motion we approve those tonight.
Second.
Moving second, we approve appropriation 1A through 1D, discussion?
And the addendum.
And the addendum.
Yep.
Not roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliwatt?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Dr. Burrow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Two transfers. 2A is transfer funds for supplies and travel for the Head Start Companion, that's $500. 2B is to transfer funds for staffing reallocations from educational assistance to teachers, Those have both been approved by the budget committee, and I move for approval, transfers 2A and B.
So moved.
Moving second, approve transfers 2A, 2B, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
All right. There were some supplemental things that were handed out to us. The halfway point for the budget was given out for informational purposes, and that is all from budget.
Thank you.
Transportation.
Transportation committee met on Monday and only had one issue, and that was to replace, after David Parker's retirement, the remainder of his contract. And a motion was made by Andy and seconded by Teresa to approve the new contract.
And a motion was made by Andy and seconded by Teresa to approve the new contractor, Ms. Iler. So I would move that we accept that recommendation.
Second.
Move and second, we approve the transfer of the contract, discussion. Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Policy didn't meet?
Yeah.
Good.
She thought meeting two months.
Dr. Burrow?
That's a record.
You'll get you next month.
Yeah.
We're doing something right.
Saving up, yeah.
Action items. Approval of tenure.
So moved.
Second.
Move and second, we approve the tenure list, any questions? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Congratulations.
Yep, I will be going out and giving pens to all these people. We've got pens, tenure pens, and we will be working through them for next month and make sure they get those, and our certificate, yep.
What, how long now does it take to be tenured?
They, they have to, they, it takes five years, and they have to be either a Level 4 or Level 5 to, those last three years, so.
Approval easement, D V E S.
And move and we approve?
Second.
Where is this?
Dutch Valley.
I know, but is it in front?
Because it's on the side, it goes behind the school.
Oh, okay. It's not gonna affect the?
It's been, it's been a year, hasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Motion made and seconded, that we approve the easement at Dutch Valley. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no.
Seb's got a question, Doc.
I'm sorry?
Does this need to be notarized, don't you think?
Well, it, yes.
It has to go through, once they do the easement, the law director will have to prepare a form.
It's gotta be more than just this memo.
Yeah, we approve it, and then the law director will prepare an easement. That Tim will sign, and the county, the mayor will sign, and it gets attached to the property.
Because I didn't, I didn't think just the memo would be sufficient.
Is there a term that we're doing for so many years?
A new easement that would last in perpetuity until we sold the property. It just travels with the property.
So we not had one up to this point?
Well, no, but what we've done is allow them for the last 40 years to do that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Just gentleman agreement.
Yes.
Is it the driveway?
After 21 years, it becomes automatic, and I think they're just now trying to tidy everything up for that.
Is this the driveway down on the, I don't know, call it the lower side?
Yes, yes, yep.
That's what I thought it was.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Update COVID-19 procedure for staff.
What we're asking is to, the one we had, it, it ended on December 31st, and I recommend that we would go ahead and reinstate this with five COVID days, because that is in line with the new CDC guidelines.
That would change it from 10 days to five days.
Move and approve, seconded.
Move and second, we approve the change in the COVID policy, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Did we have, was it 2% we had in schools?
Yep, we did have that, but you know, when they passed the new law, that took all that away.
Let me, let me ask a question that was asked of me. Were voted to establish that policy?
Yep.
Does the law have the right to override our policy?
Yes.
So far.
Yep, now, what, what, what they've told us, and they'll can, if you all choose to file a lawsuit against the state, and I think it's, I think it's, I think one of them said it's about $150,000 to get started.
A system our size typically piggybacks off the bigger systems that they'll get together to offset the cost. So a system our size would never file a lawsuit.
We can still have protocols we can put in place at 2%, we just can't require masks.
Yep, yep.
And that's one of many protocols we put in place anyway, so.
And, and what we're doing is, we're, we're still doing, we're still doing our contact tracing. We're still sending people home, we're testing. We're, we're making sure that the people say, you know, we're recommending, hey, you need to wear a mask and things like that. So I think here's the thing about it is, our kids are still not catching, our students are, I call them kids, they're my kids, they're still not catching it at school, they're catching it everywhere else because our schools are the cleanest, our custodial staff and everybody, they're working their tails off to keep our schools clean, and so.
What percentage would you say probably wearing a mask?
Very few, probably less than 5%, I would say.
But our school numbers are still lower than the county.
Yes, whole, yes.
Which should be telling that we're doing it right.
Did we approve in the, the, in, in school games that?
Yep, yep, they're in there. They were on, they were on the, they're on the consent agenda. We got two for wrestling and one for baseball.
Anything else?
We voted on the COVID, didn't we?
Yep, yep, we voted on COVID.
Give me up, we're adjourned.
Bye.
Bye, Teresa.
Bye, Teresa.
Bye.